Hello, everyone. Welcome to our meeting. I'll call our meeting to order and if we could rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. To the above which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, everyone. We are roll call.
Here.
I'm sorry, here. Sorry about that. Councilor Capola, here.
Here.
Councilor Peonesa.
Here.
Councilor Russo.
Here.
Here. You have a form.
Thank you. Okay, we are on to our audience of citizens. If there's anyone that wishes to speak, now would be your time. And first on the list, Dennis Kern. Okay, well, you are the only one on the list, but you're not, you're first anyway, Dennis. You're first in our heart and minds, okay? You're number one.
I am a resident at 57 Cider Mill Road, the village of Kensington. I'm also the president of the Berlin Land Trust and I appear before you tonight on behalf of two matters of concern to the land trust and we hope of concern to you. So, Mr. Mayor, councilors, the first matter I'd like to talk about is what I termed to be an almost travesty on the Berlin Turnpike at Lamination State Park, where the abutting owner, Meriden Homestead L.C., was attempting to purchase 2.7 acres of state land, thereby disconnecting the entire park from the Berlin Turnpike. And that was a considerable upset to the land trust and we thank this council. We thank, you know, Representative Beach and we thank all of the people who participated in defending the environment, defending Lamination State Park, which is our only state park in Berlin. So, the land trust attended on September 24th, a meeting at Deep. Now, we were there with a lot of important people from Deep. And we also had representatives from several of the other land trusts or environmental parties. And the point of all of this, at the, we were asking for immediate attention to this matter. But we were thinking that, in part, the area could be in access to the mountain. We call it the mountain, okay? So, we thought it could be a good access to the mountain and we thought that this matter should be dealt with. It's an encroachment. It's totally illegal. If somebody put a shed or an outbuilding on your property, you would be upset. And you might even take action, right? But the state works in a kind of ponderous way, slowly. And basically, the point of the meeting, at the end of the meeting, they essentially said to us, "Well, this is all very important. This, we appreciate your concerns, but we've turned it over to the AG's office." Now, that could be a 10-year turnover. I mean, it could take them a long time to deal with this and it's a simple matter. It's an encroachment. Can't be much more simple than that in law, in property law. So, what I asked the town council to consider doing is writing a, through the mayor or through, you know, the town manager, writing a letter to the Attorney General of the State of Connecticut, asking them, telling them this is important to the town of Berlin and to the residents of the town of Berlin, and asking them to take action on it, to move this along. I think that, maybe my interpretation, but I think that an office like the Attorney General responds to pressure points, if you will. And if there's no pressure on it, if there's no comments directed toward it, I think that the matter is going to sit on somebody's desk for a long time. And this, again, is a simple matter. It's an encroachment. So, I'd ask, I don't, the land trust, excuse me, the land trust would ask that you take appropriate action, send a letter to the Attorney General expressing the concerns of the town of Berlin and asking that action continue to be taken and hopefully speed it up. But do it nicely. Do it nice. Okay, so that's the first point and we really would appreciate that. We don't have the influence the town council has. We're a nonprofit organization, so we don't speak with your authority. So, we think that you can help us out in this regard. And the other, the other thing is that we want to talk about is the forest fire on Lamination Mountain. I do not call it a brush fire, okay? It was a forest fire. I've seen pictures of it and it was frightening. And I, I'm glad I'm not a resident in the immediate area because I would have been worried for several weeks about that fire. Once the fire is out, however, damage has been done to the mountain, all right? There are really serious concerns up there now. There are new trails or roads that have to be, that are now part of the environment and have to be drained properly, have to be constructed properly. They, they create a possible problem in and of themselves. There's a deforestation up there, all right? The, the question is whether or not the trees will come back. Some, some of them will, but there's a planting issue, all right? We need to know what we can plant up there. There's, there's a myriad of other issues, invasives. When the, when the trees are down, invasives will start coming in because there's more sunlight, right? All right, if you've ever noticed, invasives like the edge of woods, if you've ever gone down the highway, you see all the invasives right next to the, next to the highway because they like the sun, they like the edge of the woods. Well, now, there's a lot more sun up there. There's a lot more, a lot less forest and a lot more cleared areas. And it's 125 acres. So, we would ask that, and I think this may come up for discussion later on your agenda, but we would ask that you ask or seek help from the town staff with regard to several matters. I mean, really, with regard to how you could find sources to help the town, sources of money, maybe from the state, to help the town restore the mountain, protect the mountain. And also, to investigate, the staff, I think, can be asked to investigate with, in conjunction with the State of Connecticut, to investigate the extent of the damages up there, to investigate the new roads and trails, and not trail so much, but the new roads, the fire prevention roads that have been put in, to see what kind of problems exist in the town of Berlin, obviously. But we're directly concerned because we have 15 acres that was decimated. At least a major part of the middle of it was burned down, was burned out. So, we're concerned about the mountain and there's a lot of property that the town of Berlin owns. I think they own something like 50 acres up there. There's also property that the land trust owns in Berlin and we don't have the resources to kind of conduct investigations like this. We don't have the resources to look for help. We think your town staff can do some of this. And we'd ask that you consider having the town staff address the problems up on the mountain caused by the forest fire, or they call it the Hawthorne Fire, right? So, if there are problems up there, we need to address them. And if the town of Berlin can help through its staff, it would be wonderful. Merry Christmas to everyone.
Merry Christmas, Dennis.
And thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thanks, Dennis.
That's. I'll make sure that we send a letter to the AG from my office in Hartford.
That would be wonderful.
Yeah, we'll get one from the town, too.
Yep.
It's just that sometimes they listen to.
Sure.
Multiple requests.
Multiple requests as opposed to no requests.
Have you visited the site, Dennis? Have you visited this building we're talking about that was built in the state park? It's not a garden shed.
But I've seen many pictures.
It's a truck garage. They're running equipment out of there. I wish I could do that for free.
Shall I say it's more than your operating program? Let me put it down. I mean, all.
I think there's multiple buildings.
Yo.
There's, there's a, there is a few buildings up there. They're all encroachments. And then, of course, there's a driveway that's an encroachment. And it's, it's just simply, in my opinion and the opinion of land trust, unacceptable. You know, so, but we need to get the Attorney General moving in that regard and not have the matter stuck on somebody's desk.
Thank you.
Which is where a lot of matters get stuck, as you know. Thank you very much.
Okay, any, anyone else for the audience of citizens online, I guess, Kate would be? No one's here, right? I don't either. Okay, so we'll move along. We'll move along to the mayor's update quickly. Just, the main thing I wanted to update was, I think there was two things. I can't remember the second one. The first one was, which I know I'll ask, Lee, we'll write a little summary of, as we talked about our BrightFeeds issue. The last meeting, we told the BrightFeeds folks that we would give them a little bit of a written update this month. And then we have a meeting, I think, scheduled in January, mid-January, I think. Yeah, so.
Date on that meeting?
Fifteenth? Is it the fifteenth?
Yeah.
The fifteenth. Well, we'll talk about some more progress, but one of the, I think, two, two significant events which we could update them on. One would be the, we hired a sound engineer and we'll be sending him this week, the sound study that we had done and have him review that and see what comes of that. And then, we also engaged him to do some additional sound studies, what he recommends to us after that. So, he's going to look at this study. We're going to send him the results. And we just literally, I think, executed the agreement the other day, right? I think we finished it the other day. And then, we'll have him, he's got some other recommendations of what he can do. Probably visit some homes, visit the area. And with, with his expertise, he will, you know, give us his judgment on the sound issues that may, may be coming out of BrightFeed. So, that's one thing. That's moving forward. And the second thing, unfortunately, the ZBA the other night denied the request to raise the stack on the facility. I, I don't quite understand what occurred at that meeting. I wasn't there. And apparently, some of the residents that have, that were here in our November meeting that heard we were going to raise the stack, we heard the benefit of raising the smokestack to, you know, to disperse the odors coming out of it higher in the atmosphere, which should end the problem, we hope. Deep agreed with us, came to the meeting and told ZBA they didn't want that. And these are the very folks that sat here in front of us and wanted solutions. And I thought we were bringing them a solution and they didn't want it and ZBA still could have voted for it. There was staff notes that they had received that explained to them that it would be certainly a valid for them to have voted to raise that stack for the, for the health of the community. And I don't know what transpired with that, but, so that's disappointing. But we'll put that in our summary nonetheless. I think it was just a few residents that were there. And Jennifer, our town attorney, Capola, who was there, if you could just give us just a minute or two on, you know, your take on the meeting and what occurred there, since I wasn't there, so I'd like to hear, hear it first person. And/or Lee, too. You, I know you were there, I think.
Good evening, everybody. Nice to see you. So, Ms. Maureen Juisty, your town planner, Ms. Juisty is also on as well.
Oh, yeah, Maureen.
She was present at the meeting as well as your CEO, Paulie Moore Bedelli. And yes, board member, Lenny Tubbs, he did make a motion to deny the variance application. And the reasons that were given, because, you know, they were encouraged, as the law requires, to state collective reasons in the motion so that everybody was voting on collective reasons for the action taken, were that he felt that the applicant had every opportunity to make things right, that the applicant is a business. And what was being proposed, was being proposed for the applicant to run a business and that there was, in fact, no legal hardship. So, I don't, I don't know how much folks know about the variance process, but there is, in Section 15 of your zoning regulations, a statement of the authority that the ZBA has to vary the regulations. And one of the requirements is that there has to be the presence of exceptional difficulty or unusual hardship. And then, there are findings that they must make. This is in Section 15B5 of the zoning regulations. And I'm just going to read to you what it says with regard to that hardship. In A, it says that there are special circumstances or conditions fully described in the findings of the ZBA applying to the lot or structure for which the variance is sought, which are peculiar to such lot or structure and do not apply generally to lots or structures in the neighborhood and which have not resulted from any willful act of the applicant subsequent to the date of adoption of the regulation from which the variance is sought, whether in violation of the provisions herein or not. And at the end, in subsection D, it says that the granting of the variance is not based upon the non-conformity of neighboring lots, uses, buildings or structures, nor upon a financial or economic hardship. So, essentially, by the language used by Mr. Tubbs and the motion was seconded by Mr. Whiteside and then it was a five oh vote in favor of the motion to deny. They felt that the, that the hardship, I think, was self-created, that it was self-imposed. All the members of the public who did speak again spoke against the variance being granted. No, so no members of the public appeared before the board who were in favor of the granting of the variance. And I do understand and did review in preparation for the ZBA meeting the recordings of the special meetings before the council. I also think it's important to point out that there was no report, testimony, or even simple correspondence from the DEEP in support of the increase in the height of the, the stack. And the applicant did testify, specifically Mr. Fife, Jonathan Fife, who's CEO of BrightFeeds. He did testify that an air consultant was retained by BrightFeeds, but he did not offer into the record, again, any report, any correspondence from, and the consultant is Aqua Air Environmental Consultants, nor was somebody present from Aqua Air to offer any testimony. So, it did ultimately fail, the application. Testimony was given that the thermal oxidizer will be installed in February or March. And that's where we stand on it. If anybody has any questions, Maureen and I are happy to answer if you have questions about the process. And again, if you want to take a look at what the regulations require, you're looking at Section 15 of the zoning regulations.
I have one question, Jennifer. I thought that also, in those regs somewhere, if it has to do with public health.
Yes.
That they certainly could have voted for the variance, right?
So, I'll, I'll tell you a little bit about that. So, staff typically does, and Maureen does this for planning and zoning and Paul for the zoning board of appeals, but staff typically prepares a staff report or staff comments. And guidance was offered by the CEO, by Paul Moore Bedelli, to the board just in, in the instance that they did wish to approve the application. He did give some guidance because this application is very unique in terms of what it's dealing with and the reasons for it. So, he did provide them with the following statement and I think it's got several components and I'll point out to you. But he told them that the requested variance may meet criteria for approval, again, under Section 15 of the zoning regulations, based off of these findings. And he said the following, "Exceptional difficulty exists in securing the interests of public health and welfare created by imposing the zoning regulation limitations." And he cites the section that deals with the height limitation on chimneys. "Upon the, the height of the chimney at issue, which is a necessary or pertinent accessory to the principal use as contemplated by the regulations." And that language of accessory and necessary or pertinent, it comes directly from the height limitation regulation. And then, the interest in securing public health and welfare, that's directly from the ZBA's authority, again, in Chapter 15 in the powers and duties section and Section A of that, that chapter. And it goes on, "The height limitations may conflict with the recommendations of the state permitting agencies for operating a facility of the size and type involved because we know, obviously, that BrightFeeds has the necessary permits to operate, including the most effective means of managing air and/or odor emissions." And then, it goes on with regard to hardship. "Critically, the condition that the variance seeks to address specifically the odor emissions, which are negatively impacting the public health and welfare, is not one that is self-inflicted." Again, self-imposed, self-created. And he says this with regard to that, "As the use itself is permitted by the zoning regulations within the general industrial zones and the subject GI zone happens to be located in close proximity to both commercial and residential zones." So, that was the guidance that Paul offered. Again, should the board be inclined to approve it, he felt that, you know, if sticking closely to the language that he cited, that given the situation that they could have found, that it was not a self-inflicted or self-created hardship. And that, basically, that was rooted in the fact that it, it is a permitted use under the zoning regulations and certainly permitted by the agencies with authority to, to allow the use at the state level. So, to answer your question, that's what occurred with regard to that, Mayor.
Okay, and the second question I just have, since you were there, or Lee, Lee was there, and Maureen. The residents spoke out against raising the stack, which is, and I don't know who was there, but I find that odd because many of the residents, if they were the same folks that were here in our November meeting, we talked about raising the stack. Deep said that was a good thing to do. It was a short-term solution, we know, till the thermal oxidizer would be installed. So, I'm just curious, what reason, I assume, residents that have been involved in it? I don't know that. You can tell me that. Why would they vote against it, which would help with the odor control for the short term, at least?
Well, they, they spoke against it. I think there was the concern that it would be moving the problem. There was the concern about whether or not it would, in fact, result in any reduction and any relief. I think that there was also some concern expressed that, because, and I don't know if you, if everybody has actually seen a picture of an oxidizer, but the oxidizer itself will have its own stack. So, the existing stack that they were proposing to increase from 42 feet to 85 feet is, is going to be removed ultimately. But there was, there was some confusion and some clarification necessary with regard to that because there was concern that was expressed that if the two were both remaining, that if, if the one on the oxidizer was in disrepair, that they, they may, again, make use of the existing. But that was clarified in the record, that once the oxidizer is in place and, and fully functioning, that the existing would be removed. So, some of it was addressed. You know, it's, I think, a circumstance of perhaps concern about making things worse. But, you know, there was testimony given by Mr. Fife that the air consultant had indicated that there would be, I believe he said, a 50% reduction. And, I'm just looking at my notes, that the increase in height would lead to 50% reduction in anything traveling through the air, was specifically what Mr. Fife said. But, you know, we, we didn't have any, anything from the air consultant that was offered into the record.
But we, so we didn't have any other, but expertise as far as the residents saying it would make the problem worse. We just had that discussion with Deep, who gave us their expert opinion.
Hey, Mark, are we allowed to say anything, Mark, here?
Not at this moment. Hang on.
Because what you're saying, what you're saying is just not accurate, though. So, okay, I'll, I'll wait.
Hold on a second.
So, in terms of what was entered into the record, as far as the comments from, from the public, the public did not offer anything into the record in, in terms of, I think, what the mayor was asking for, was any alternative expert opinion? No, there was nothing offered.
All right.
By the public into the record.
Appreciate that. All right, so, anyone else, I mean, want to say anything on this issue? I mean, it's really the mayor's update. I just kind of wanted to give an update, but if you have a.
So, the, the ZBA denied the application because they said the legal hardship that was claimed by BrightFeeds was self-created? That's the reason?
Yeah, that, that it didn't rise to being what was appropriate under the law because BrightFeeds is a business. And what was being proposed was for BrightFeeds to continue to run the business with addressing, obviously, the concern of the odor. So, that, that was essentially it, that, you know, that hardship requirement was not met.
Do we know if BrightFeeds is planning to file an administrative appeal, then? Just out of curiosity, have we heard anything about that?
We have not. They have 15 days from the date of publication of the notice of decision to do so. But there was no indication given in the meeting that that would be forthcoming.
Thank you.
Anyone else, questions for these folks? I know we're under the mayor's update, but, yeah, Maureen, I'm sorry.
I just wanted to add that, because you asked, you know, as to what kind of participation. I think I noted there were about seven speakers in opposition that were in the room. It was, it was a pretty full audience for ZBA. And I think that the, one of the reasons that was restated a number of times was, but any proof that the height of the stack wouldn't just push the problem further away or further out, as opposed to the notion of dissipating the smell in a higher level of air, you know, broader area instead, would it just be making it travel differently? And in a different direction, there are further distance. I think that was just one of the other comments that was, seemed to be repeated.
Yeah, I appreciate that. Anyone else under the mayor's update? We're good. We've, so that's, yes.
So, at this point in time, since they've denied this, even though Deep suggested this was.
So at this point in time, since they've denied this, even though Deep suggested this was the the right thing to do. Where does that leave us as a town to to try to get the citizens some sort of relief? I know that we're putting this oxidizer on there, I know that we're doing the noise thing. You know, I feel like our hands are being tied here, I mean, this is, this is insane. That we didn't, that this did not pass through our our planning and zoning, I I don't, you know, I don't understand. We've been told by Deep, this is the thing to do, they are supposed to be the experts. And I'm not sure who helped dictate where this has gone, but this is not good.
Well, you know, too, let me add add this, you know, it seems like that since this has been denied, the only choice left is, you know, we're gonna have to just wait for the oxidizer to get in here. And be installed since this was denied.
Yeah, you're right, Mark, I mean, this is crazy.
Beating our heads up.
Exactly, we're trying to fix this problem, I don't think there's not one person up there that does not want to see this fixed. And we are being denied by our own people, okay, that we can't fix the problem, or at least adjust something. So that it can be fixed down the road with this oxidizer and the other things that we're doing to rectify the problem. I'm not happy with this at all.
Too much negativity with the whole thing.
Absolutely, absolutely.
At what point, at what point will I be able? I'm being respectful, I'm asking when I'll be able to speak, that's all.
It's not, we're not, Audience of Citizens, Ryan, we're.
You will wait your turn, if the mayor allows you to have a turn.
I mean, we're really out of the audience.
Yeah, we're out of the audience.
Yeah, we we've got to move on with our agenda, but.
I just want to excuse me, just make note that that Mr. Malloy, Ryan, Lloyd, I think. Remembering his last name correctly, that he did. Enter a couple of chat comments, so just with regard to that. That chat is not typically checked during a Zoom meeting and hybrid meetings, so. I always like to just make the public aware of that. But I just wanted to make you aware that he did enter a couple of comments in the chat.
Tonight, in tonight's meeting?
Yes, just a moment ago.
If you see on the screen, there's chat and there's two.
Okay.
So we don't normally.
Check the chat?
Check the chat, because people speak during. Not necessarily during the different agenda items. It is up to.
Okay, well, we'll look at the chat, Ryan, we we really got to move on, but we'll look at your chat and, you know, we have our public meeting coming up, obviously.
No, I'm gonna have my mother come and babysit my son so I can come down there in person, so I'll see you guys soon. Thank you.
Well, the Audience of Citizens is over, so.
So I had to just listen to our entire town, we have an entire group now that's formed to to fight this. Right, respectfully, I had to just listen to that, our advocacy group just had to listen to all those lies and we can't speak. Right, this is wrong, we wanted data, that's the main reason, we needed data, Mark, they brought.
Ryan, sorry, we can't, we can't just go on. Yeah, we can't.
Then don't spill garbage, have a good night.
Yes, we need to move on. All right, that's the end of the mayor's update, we'll go to our consent agenda. I have I have one question before we get started on it. In the in the budget and adjustments, which we want to. Do by consent, is that number two, I think, yeah. Particularly the the nursing, the VNA budget.
Excuse me, mayor?
Yes.
I apologize.
I'm sorry.
Have a question on the consent.
Yes.
That has to be removed.
Okay, so if we could remove it.
So you can take it up to the next item.
Yep.
But do the consent first, please, approve it, and then you can go right into the consent number two.
So we're gonna take.
So can I move to move consent? Item number two, and make it one A of the regular meeting.
Sure, but yes, that's fine.
Yes, is that good? All right, so we got the regular consent agenda, the rest of them. So you guys have reviewed the consent items and. Go ahead and take a vote.
You're gonna do, I move consent items to number one.
Yes.
Three through.
Yes, through eight, yes.
So I move to approve consent items, one. Committing number two, three through eight, as presented.
All right, thank you, second. All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, all right, so moved. All right, to our regular, well, we, yeah.
Go into the next, you can go into the consent number two if you want to now.
Okay, well, we have a update in VNA financials, I guess, I don't know if we could, we have to take this separately, this is part of that, I guess, but. I'm just, I don't know, we, I don't want to get in a whole big discussion tonight on the VNA, we've got a lot to get through here, but. Just the per diem account for additional hours was developed, assuming per diem labor would be used for additional hours of patient care. Beyond the normal workday for full, two full time nurses, current management has utilized full time overtime more than per diem labor. I I don't, I don't really understand what what's going on at the VNA with this. Then we can maybe have some from the VNA come the next meeting, or if Lee can explain a little bit of it, but I I don't. I'm not clear on if they're using their per diem count, I thought it was for hiring per diem personnel. To take the place of. Yeah, that's what I thought, now we're being, it's being used for overtime. And who? You know, who's approving that, I guess, at the VNA, I I didn't think that's what we had the per diem account for, but yes.
Mayor, this is Kevin, if you want me to.
Yes.
So what happened is the per diem account is used, historically, we used to break out all of the different therapists, occupational therapy, physical therapy, et cetera. Those were put together as a single account in the fiscal year twenty five budget. Because patient by patient, those services are used as needed. And we were encountering a lot of transfers between those various, those various elements. Because we just simply don't know going in what the patient mix will be. What's happened is, we also incorporated the possibility of utilizing per diem nurses if the volume rose to a certain level. In the interest of patient care, the acting director and clinical supervising nurse, with her professional judgment. Feels that utilizing the existing nurses rather than bringing in an additional staff or per diem labor for nursing alone. Is a better use of it, as a result, our our nursing line in the ledger is overstated and the per diem is understated. This in no way changes the VNA budget, it does not increase the budget, it is simply moving between two lines. Specifically for patient care at the discretion of the director and clinical nursing supervisor.
I I have a quick question, so this patient care, is this the standard hourly rate that we are paying our VNA nurses? Or is this one and a half times what the hourly rate is, you know, I'm not sure. I know you're saying it's it's an even swap and it's staying within budget, it's just the line item is changing in terms of description. So my question to you is, are we paying them, we'll just use ten dollars an hour, or are we paying them fifteen dollars an hour, are we paying them twenty dollars an hour?
In this case, most of the time they would be paid at time and a half, that time and a half rate based on their hourly rate. Is at or below what a per diem rate would be for the same services, so. There is no net negative impact to the town, sometimes it's actually slightly favorable. And in addition to that, the patient care is, I would say, as good or better, just for continuity sake, I'm not gonna say the per diem nurses aren't very good. But as we all know, if you're able to keep the same doctor, same nurse, whatever the case may be, the care, the continuity of care and the quality of care is better as you continue.
What is our per diem, I I mean, our census for, do we know the census numbers on how many folks we're caring for, just out of curiosity?
We do. They provided some quarterly updates at the last Board of Finance meeting.
I have those, Kevin.
You have them, Lee?
Okay.
Thanks. Yeah, all right, so let's, we can kind of slide into that, this sort of fits under that, right? Yeah, yes, okay.
And I can either do the handouts now or after I have a summary, kind of the VNA update. My first in the last six months, right, being up at this podium.
Yes, yes, there you go. First and last.
Let it send off.
You're welcome, Lee.
Anything else we could do tonight, Corey, let us know, we'll we'll try to accommodate you.
So. Everything that I referred to in the summary is part of the attachment and the caseload which Kevin referred to. And so, basically, the update is the VNA, and I just want to go through this because those who aren't familiar with it. VNA is a home healthcare agency established under the Town of Berlin's charter. Structure and staffing requirements are outlined in the Berlin VNA Staffing Requirement Memorandum. Shipman and Goodwin LLP dated January twenty fifth, twenty twenty four at the town's request. Town also consulted with the Central Connecticut Health District to ensure compliance with the Connecticut Department of Public Health Standards. Unlike other town departments that are fully funded by tax dollars, VNA is expected to generate its own revenue by providing services to residents. Recent years, the VNA has struggled, self sustaining and profitable, leading to significant budget cuts. For example, the VNA's budget for fiscal year twenty twenty five was reduced by four hundred nineteen thousand, six hundred and fifty six. Fiscal year twenty twenty four, even though its responsibilities as defined by the town charter and state regulations have not changed. As of now, you'll see this in the handout on the financial sheet. VNA's expenditures are in line with the approved fiscal year twenty twenty four, twenty five budget. Year to date expenditures, as you can see, are forty seven point three percent of the budget, as shown in the attached financial report, which is consistent. With where we are at this point in the year, December. The VNA's fiscal year to date revenue has decreased from three hundred ninety five thousand, nine thirty eight in fiscal year twenty twenty four. Two hundred eighty four thousand, eight hundred and sixty eight in fiscal year twenty twenty five. However, this decrease does align with the fiscal year twenty twenty five budget. Reduction in revenues was expected as the VNA has cut one full time nursing position. And eliminated two full time house healthcare needs. Fewer staff members naturally results in fewer patients and lower revenue. For the year to date period ending November twenty twenty five, VNA net loss is a hundred and ten, hundred and ten thousand. Lower than the same period in fiscal year twenty twenty four. Although the revenue has decreased in absolute terms, the VNA is performing better in relation to the budget. This is due to the combination of staff reductions, careful oversight by town and nursing department personnel. And ongoing focus on maintaining high quality patient care. In the short term, the VNA will incur additional costs for training the acting administrator, who is working toward earning the credentials required. Become the unsupervised full time director and clinical supervisor. Until she is fully credentialed, the VNA must continue to retain a consultant. Oversee the acting administrator as mandated by the Department of Public Health. Given the positive trend in the VNA's financials and the investment of staff development, it is crucial. For the Town Council and Board of Finance to support the administrator in providing what is necessary for her to become fully credentialed. And to implement the new structure and processes that have been established. Despite the significant budget reductions over the last year, the VNA has operated within its budget. And has collected revenues that exceed last year's performance by at least two hundred thousand dollars. The VNA team is to be commended for their hard work, resilience and continued focus on providing excellent patient care. One of the other handouts that Kevin referred to deals with. The actual caseload, if you will, during the last quarter, and that really does reflect the numbers. And the staff involved with providing those services. And I think that that pretty well summarizes it. Certainly, if there are questions, we can take them, or I can go back and get the information for the council. But this is kind of a snapshot based on the financials, where we're at today. I mean, we are positively trending, there are, we're not at the point of a break even, but we are. Two hundred thousand dollars essentially, because the one ten is because it's in December. But if you multiply that for the other half of the fiscal year, projected would be about two hundred thousand. Minus the four nineteen, which was reduction, so it's a positive, even though it's less money. Than it would have been last year, obviously.
So the net, the the net loss is a hundred and ten thousand lower than the same period last year, so we still have a net loss, it's just, this is just lower?
Two hundred over, right, and.
What's the whole loss, then? Yeah, yeah.
So if you project it, because this is just through December, so if you project out to the end of the fiscal year.
Right.
We anticipate that that one hundred and ten thousand would double, right, in theory. So that would be about two hundred and ten, two hundred and twenty thousand versus the four nineteen, which was, which was how the budget was reduced. So it's about two hundred thousand dollars to the good from last year.
Loss over their total budget is what this year, a million dollars?
Their total budget this year is, yes, I believe it's a million.
Yeah, point something.
Right, yeah, a million thirty two, seven oh five.
Okay, so.
Those are, those are expenditures, the the budgeted loss was five hundred seventy thousand.
So we still have a loss of five hundred and seventy thousand?
Well, that was in the budget. To date. We're trending better than last year.
The loss is less.
The loss. It's trending that way, yes, I mean, you still have seven months of the year left, but.
Right, nonetheless, there's still a loss, though. Operating at a loss.
Yes.
Yes, it's just a lower loss so far. Okay.
Correct.
That's why I project, we projected it at, based on current numbers and current income revenues, at around two hundred thousand less than last year. To the good, in other words.
About last year, we had a seven hundred and fifty thousand dollar loss, or something like that? Seven, eight?
It was close to that, yeah.
Right, something like that, from what I remember. Unfortunately, we've talked about that loss too many times.
Kevin, seven forty, three sixty one, correct?
That was last year's budget, and the loss was was in that neighborhood for actuals as well.
So we're gonna, we're predicting five hundred thousand in losses instead of seven fifty?
What it sounds like, right?
Yes, yes.
Which is not okay, it's better, but it's.
It's better.
It's moving in the right direction, still not, I guess, what we hoped for, but.
Once that person's accredited, won't have to pay for the consultant, that'll help.
And that was the.
How much longer?
Well, that's the, a year?
Is it a full year?
Yeah, it's.
And we.
Around a year, it's however long it takes to get, you know, the credentials.
So we have six months in on that, do we know?
And that's what the twenty four thousand five was, right? And the consent agenda was for the continuing service of the certified, yeah. Okay, any other questions on this, so.
You still need to transfer the money in number two?
Yeah. Yeah, I still.
Transfer, as far as for that's finance number two, it's up to you, Mayor.
Just so the council is aware, this account is over budget and we need to make the transfer. We could do it now, we can do it later in the year. But the account is over and it would, if we don't do it now, it will come in later in the year, at the end of the year, because we're required to be in balance.
I don't wait and see?
There's no. Why not do it now? I guess I don't understand why we wouldn't do it now.
I guess we can.
One column to the other.
I understand the VNA is an issue, we need to continue monitoring the issue, but I don't see any reason to kick the tin can down the road on this one.
Yeah, well, maybe, maybe they could walk a little bit, watch a little bit closer over the overtime, I don't know. Or may, maybe they could do per diem, which would be less. I, I thought the whole point of the per diem, I thought we were trying to follow the Westbrook model with the per diem, but apparently we're not, because we're still losing money and we're still paying our staff more money, but so, you know, I, I don't know, it.
Do we have anybody that's on per diem, Kevin, like we had talked about doing? Is there anybody per diem, or we don't have any? I know you, you say that it's less expensive to do it the way that we're doing it, but, you know, part of the plan was that we were going to have a per diem person as needed. I'm just questioning if we have that per diem person, or do we not, are we not utilizing anybody?
I would say largely, they're not utilizing any per diems for nursing today, and that's largely based on the volume. But the per diems, the occupational therapists, physical therapists, social services, speech therapists, have for many years been per diem only, and they have, they continue that trend. So there are per diems being used, this is specifically the nurses. The staffing model now, the town did shift to the Westbrook model, which resulted in the elimination of one nursing position coming into this fiscal year and the elimination of permanent staffing for home health aides. And so the home health aides also now are in the per diem line. And we are using those only as needed, which has helped reduce the staff costs, because we no longer have a full-time permanent staff person or only paying when those services are needed. So we, we are doing that, but when it comes specifically to the nurses, the cost differential is negligible and the volume isn't high enough to keep per diems on permanently right now. But the goal would be to get up there to where we would be balancing. Hopefully, that answered your question.
What is the census? Do we have a number, the number of patients we're seeing?
It was sixty-three through September, but do we know where we are now? That's four months ago. I mean, are we down to forty, or are we still at sixty-three, or? Does the ratio?
I, I don't have, I don't have updated numbers, but we, we do intend to provide them the next Board of Finance meeting, and those can be shared with the council as well.
Please. Yeah. Yeah.
There should be, we should.
Yeah, it's important to know our census, I mean, we've always been, you know, not, unfortunately, the last few years, not that good. Which is why we're losing money, but.
The one thing I would caution against as well for the census is the mix. So the current director has done a very good job of moving the town away from the CCCI and Medicaid reimbursements, which are noticeably lower and heavily concentrating on Medicare and private insurance, which reimburses better. So sometimes having fewer patients, but better paying insurers is sometimes a good thing as well.
No, understood, and we appreciate that, yeah. Yeah, no, we still need to know, but I, we appreciate that, Kevin.
Kevin, I don't know if you can find out as well for maybe the next meeting, but can we find out the last time the VNA negotiated their contracts with the different, at least private payers, commercial payers?
I, I will follow up with Edie on that.
Okay, thank you.
Appreciate it. So what do you want to do, folks? You want to vote that through, because we're going to need it anyway? Okay, go ahead, we good with that? Take a motion?
We can transfer a hundred and twenty thousand, six hundred dollars of detailed company spreadsheet.
No, right, is that, how much was, forty-five thousand, I thought, I'm sorry.
Sorry.
Did we miss the whole?
It was a hundred and twenty thousand, six.
The total.
The library wanted to be in it.
Oh, yes, the others were on there too, yes, yes, the whole thing, yes.
The total.
Total, got the total, yes, sir.
Cover year-end transfers identified accounts pending approval with Board of Finance.
Thank you, second?
Second that.
All is in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, or it's a move, I don't know my money's on my mind tonight, but. Board of Ed discussion, registrar discussion, I don't know why.
It's cranky.
Y'all song on that very topic.
It's on my mind every night, but whatever, okay, thank you, folks. What do we got, two? Number two? Yes, number two. Yes. Yes, what do we have?
VNA suite configuration for social services, registrar of voters, and obviously, the VNA is affected also, but this is the current space. What the town was attempting to do is to maximize the space so that it's best utilized within town hall and involves the movement of three departments, VNA, social services, and also registrar's office to provide additional space for them. And, and I think rather than regurgitate what's in the item, I think it's pretty explanatory in terms of the movement of the money, and my understanding is that there was a meeting with the public building commission, and that they have approved, as it said in the item, was written, so that it's.
Mike O'Hearn?
Hi, Mike.
Good evening.
Wish it was afternoon, that's all right.
I was asked to float this proposal by the PBC at their last meeting, and they said it's agreeable. There wasn't a formal vote, because it wasn't a formal request from the town council. But I was, I was kind of surprised, actually. And the reason is because the police department project is winding down. So the contingency that's left, I think is enough, so.
Oh, and the police project?
Chairman said he didn't see a problem with this.
Okay.
So, and it's subject to their approval, so if this goes back to the next meeting, PBC, they'll get to vote on it. So you can vote on it, the PBC has a right not to approve it officially if they change their mind.
It's going to them.
The, you know, basically, the litmus test was positive, that looked like it would go through. And by that time, the PBC, the police department project will pretty much be in punchless mode.
Okay.
But technically, I put the cart before the horse.
No, well, you.
A little bit, maybe, a little bit, that's okay.
To make sure that we didn't just waste everyone's time, you know, so, yeah, the PBC's in agreeable, that's the bottom line.
Very good.
And it's going to go to them anyway.
Yes, it will.
Yes, okay. I appreciate, we appreciate that, Charlie, you have any questions?
And they'll review the cost analysis and all of that, the public building, all okay to the numbers?
It's online.
The numbers for what?
Well, it looks like you're going to spend between seventy-five and a hundred thousand dollars to move an office.
Well, the request was to reduce the contingency. If you want them to do more, then you should, I guess, refer to the PBC or ask for their, you know, sort of opinion. That's not, the agenda item is really to do this, and the seventy-five thousand dollars would come out of the police department contingency.
That's like one little line in the end of this, so this is asking us to.
Counselor Payanessa, Doug Solak is online, you may want to ask him. But you want to know how he came up with those figures? Is that what you're asking?
I want to make sure that public building is aware of the numbers and they approve the cost.
They have not seen the numbers, no.
I believe that's a not to exceed number, Doug, did you want to comment on that?
Yes, good evening, Mr. Mayor Councillors, this was just an accelerated approach to get this proposal, this proposed concept to you before the calendar year end. So we worked with our on-call architect, on-call contractor to develop these cost estimates based on the plans that we have to date. They're not full bid documents, full architectural drawings, but it's based on the walkthrough of the existing space, meeting with the three departments impacted, what their needs are, to develop this high-level estimate. If you want to refer the whole project to the building commission, that would be a change in language in the current request tonight. But as, as Mike said, this is just to reduce the contingency amount, so we can afford to pay for the project if you're in agreement with the proposed concept to relocate the space. We did look at the community center, we did look at Pistol Creek again, there are other options out there, but this seemed to be the most cost-effective solution in the interim to take care of the needs and the deficiencies that we have generated by the expansion downstairs, so. That's what we came up with for numbers to work with the date, there are going to be other costs, we have FF and E, other soft costs, of course, with any construction, but this was the, the major scope of the work needed to divide that current VNA suite into two offices and the other components involved with construction.
There a bathroom there currently, Doug, or is that something that's being added there?
Correct, there is currently a restroom facility within the VNA suite, this proposed plan would eliminate that for additional square footage. And certainly, this, these are conceptual plans, they're not full-scale design drawings. You know, we, we have the opportunity to.
Eliminating the bathroom.
Yes, in order to get the additional space needed for the registrar of voters, they were, they were in favor of eliminating the current restroom space.
I'm sorry, I'm still confused, I'm very happy to vote to reduce the contingency for the police department, but I don't understand what we're approving to build, this is an estimate by an approved contractor, which is probably very good. But you're telling us it doesn't include anything, everything, so how do we know what we're approving, this could be a two hundred thousand dollar project.
Yeah, this, this was the, the major scope, the major financial cost for the construction aspect, and then, you know, furniture items, small soft costs.
I appreciate getting the budget number, but are we actually approving them to do the work? And if we are, if they don't know what they're doing, how do they know they can do it for this amount?
PBC has seen none of this, so it's just to continue the reduction that was requested.
Yeah, this is based on a walkthrough with the contractor.
Mike, I don't, I don't know, I just, I'd like to know what we're actually proving before we prove it.
I haven't even seen the plans myself, so.
Yeah, there's, there's a conceptual demo plan, there's a conceptual construction plan, and then there's estimates to correlate to those plans from site visits with the contractor to do basically a design-build project based on the plans we have to date.
So is the reason we're seeing this now is because this has to get moved before the end of the year? Is, is that why the money has to come out of contingency before a certain date? Or is it something that public building can look at? Because it seems like that might be the concern, have them look at it first and then come back to us again.
Well, I think we brought it to them just to get a preliminary read.
On the contingency reduction.
Contingency, they were fine with that, but to your point, Mike, it has to be approved by the council first. We did want to try to expedite it as quickly as possible because, you know, the space needs are current, you know what I mean? They're not pending, I mean, they exist as we speak, and this would solve several issues. I didn't get into detail, but there's several things involved, such as the food bank would move pre-up that room or its former purposes, which was something that was also desired. And so, but the build-out, if you will, would be to the existing VNA suite, which would enable us, as we talked about briefly, expand the space that's required by the registrar of voters and also social services, so they will be in that suite as well, and half of it and part of that space right next to them will be for the food bank, so that will reside in there as well.
So, so then, from what I'm understanding, what we're looking at tonight is just moving the money from the contingency fund from the police department to this other fund for this pending build, which will still need to get approved by public building commission and us as well again, before any work is done. Would that be correct?
I don't know how this is, and I, I've seen most projects over a million dollars or more go to the PBC almost automatically, but it's at your discretion to refer any project, really, that's a building project.
Which we, which we want to do going forward, so.
Now, and let it come back to us?
I, I think we had to approve reducing the contingency.
Yeah, yeah.
Through that tonight.
Let them look at it.
Because there's only one bidder involved, I would like them just to bless the numbers before we prove it.
Yeah, I mean, that's what we've asked.
I don't want to slow the project down, but maybe they can get to it right away.
Yeah, I, I mean, when, you know, when the next meeting is.
January, excuse me, I think it's January ninth.
All right, so that's not, that's not too far.
That would give the seventy-five thousand dollars into that fund.
Yes.
And then if you decide to want more detailed design drawings, that to go to the PBC, that could be a subsequent action. At least you know you have some money in the kitty.
Yeah.
If I.
We're just moving the fund, that's all.
Yeah, 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 okay.
Is to, to move to send the proposed configuration of the VNA suite and plans provided on call, blah, 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 for amount not to exceed seventy, seventy-four thousand, eight hundred and fifty dollars to the public building commission and pending approval by the public building commission to reduce the contingency. But you're sending to public building for their review, and then also, and it's pending their approval additionally on reducing the contingency.
Yes. I think that's what we're, I don't know, get what we're talking about?
Okay.
Yeah.
All right, so.
Hey, where would we be without you, Kay?
Aren't you glad I came?
Yes, we're glad, we're glad you're here.
Okay.
Even I told you to take the night off, you could have.
I know you did, you were good to me. Okay, so if you will say, if you can just move it, but it will be moved to send to public building commission the proposed reconfiguration of the VNA suite and plans provided by on-call contractors, Kusi Homes Architect, KHA of Berlin, Connecticut, and construction estimate from MA and M doing business as a Risco, Risco?
Risco.
Risco Construction Company, ACC of Middletown, Connecticut, for amount not to exceed seventy-four thousand, eight hundred and fifty dollars. And also a pending, pending approval by the public building commission to reduce the contingency for, how do you say that, millennial builders in the amount of seventy-five thousand.
Yes.
So moved.
Yes, so, so moved, Kay. And second from down, there we go. All right, all's in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, all right, so moved. Okay, oof, that's a lot. Okay.
All right, item three.
Okay.
Call of meeting, six forty-five PM on Jim, or seven for the purpose of approving fiscal year twenty twenty-five non-budget appropriation of general fund, unassigned fund balances in the amount of one million, three hundred and thirty-one thousand, three hundred and twenty for capital items. And that's emphasized.
Good evening, everybody, this, this is, has become somewhat of an annual process for us. During the budget process for this fiscal year, the Board of Finance elected to remove all but one capital item, which was funded by the golfers out at the golf course, from the budget and directed the town to come back for highest priority items later in the year, pending completion of the audit. You guys have the annual comprehensive financial report there tonight, the audit is complete and published. And so this request is to ask to call a town meeting before your next meeting to review the particular items. There, there's nine items, these are the highest priority items that were identified that we would like to utilize the surplus plus a little bit of. The surplus plus a little bit of additional fund balance to fund. Um, department heads will be available that night to answer specific questions. We did supply. A number of items in the backup that support the numbers, but the department heads will also be there to be able to speak to. The, the need for this, for each of these items and the timing. Um, so again, this is, uh, this is really just to call the town meeting. The only other item I'll draw your attention to is on the second page. I mentioned that we'll be using the surplus as well as, uh, some of the fund balance. And so on the second page under the funding section. I've, I've given you a breakdown here of where the unassigned fund balance is projected to be. Given where we ended the audit, as well as items that have already been approved this year. And this current request, as well as the actual determined contribution for the closed pension plan, which for the last several years, we have pulled from savings to fund. It would still leave the town with about fifteen million dollars of projected general fund unassigned fund balance, or just shy of fifteen percent. Of the fiscal year twenty-five budget. Uh, so I do believe that it is fiscally prudent to do this and to address the matters. And so tonight, we're just asking to call a town meeting. So that there can be a discussion at your January meeting.
Um, yeah, I appreciate that. I mean, I, I do have a lot of questions on some of these items, but we can, uh, I guess do it at that meeting. Um, it just one just comes to mind. I'm just curious, cause I've heard this now for a while, the fire suppression units and the network closets. Um, someone told me recently. That, do you not have any or there water or what, what, what is in those closets now? Brand new high school? There's no suppression system in there? Does anyone, anybody know the answer to that?
There is a suppression system in there. This is, this is a. I'm going to use very layman's terms. Our, our fire marshal will probably hate what I'm using, but essentially, um. Foam instead of water. And so it's similar to what we have in a lot of our, in our vaults, say at town hall.
Yes, agreed.
It would, it would, it would be able to move quickly to suppress the fire without causing nearly as much damage. Uh, the high school, like any high school, is heavily dependent upon technology. Uh, not to run the school as well as to educate the students. So. There's quite a bit of money and quite a bit of time put into, uh, organizing that. And to the extent we're able to. Uh, suppress any fire that might break out, not while also minimizing the damage i- is the goal of this.
And, and that is, that is, I, I get that. I'm just curious why in a new school, they wouldn't have done that to begin with and had water in a I T closet. Nobody does that anymore.
Yep, and, and the B O E, uh, Director of Finance and Operations is planning to be on the call on the seventh and, and she'll be able to speak to that one.
Yeah, that's good. Okay, no, I appreciate that. I, I just, it's just odd that a, a new, you know, newer building would do that, uh. A- as we know, we're all dependent on, on the I T rooms. Um, okay. And then I just have some other questions, but we can ask them. That night, like seventy grand for a van. That seems, that's quite the van, I guess. Yeah, I don't know. I buy vans. My company and we don't pay seventy grand for a van, but, and that's with equipment in it too. But anyway, okay, well, 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 we've got some questions here, I guess, but we can. Vote, vote this through and then we, we will happy to talk to the department heads for, to flesh out the rest of it.
Move to call a town meeting at six forty-five P M on January seventh, twenty twenty-five. The purpose of approving a fiscal year twenty twenty-five non-budgeted appropriation of general fund, unassigned fund balance. The amount of one million, three hundred and thirty-one thousand, three hundred and twenty dollars for capital items.
Thank you. Second. Thank you. Uh, all's in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Alright, so moved. Thank you, Kevin.
I think we're together for a little while longer.
Uh, is to call a town meeting to approve fiscal year twenty twenty-five non-budgeted appropriation of two hundred and sixty-four thousand, two hundred and twelve. Point forty-six of FEMA's storm reimbursement funds.
So you will probably recall, um, August of twenty twenty, there was a, a storm that went through. Uh, for those of you who may have been out at, at Sage Park, anytime after that, you may recall the light pole that was laying on the field as well as. A couple of the wood fences that were ripped apart and there was damage to other parts of the town. Um, the town received reimbursement for overtime labor as well as a lot of the equipment damage. And we have now, I know it's four years later, but we have finally completed the audits with both the state and the federal government for those. Um, we had a couple of ideas to utilize the money and then unfortunately the fire on Lamentation Mountain happened. Uh, with a state of emergency, the, the town manager and town staff are able to take whatever actions are necessary. Um, and expend funds even though they are not budgeted. However, now we're circling back. So this, the largest section of this money is to be appropriated to offset costs to date. We're at about a hundred eighty-eight thousand dollars of costs for the town. There are still some additional costs coming in and, um, I would expect that that number will approach two hundred thousand. We have already submitted the paperwork to put the town in line to receive reimbursement for the fire grant. It was the first in the state's history. So steps are being taken to recover that money for the town. In the meantime, this request asks to appropriate a, a substantial portion of that previous FEMA reimbursement. To, uh, fund the work that has been done on Lamentation Mountain around the emergency actions. It, it doesn't. It's not intended to address the matter that was brought up in audience of citizens. Um, this is really just about the actions that happened in those weeks. While the fire was taking place. The second piece is to address, uh, a matter that's been on the C I P for a number of years. And really does relate to storm damage and activities we've had. We have been questioned a number of times, both from our auditors as well as when we've gone out for bonding. About our resiliency. And so one of the things, the other thing we'd like to do is appropriate forty thousand dollars of this FEMA money. And combine it with seventy-two thousand dollars that is currently already been appropriated in the past. To establish an alternative fuel site up at the Timberland Golf Course. Uh, for those not familiar, the current property on Town Farm Lane. Is partially into a flood plain. And the current tanks are not in that, but are, you're, you're in that area. And this would provide resiliency and redundancy so that in the event there was an issue. And our town trucks, our town staff, our police and others are not able to get to that location. They would be able to go to higher ground at Timberland and utilize the fuel site. Uh, we felt that it dovetailed in with FEMA with the emergency activity. And as I mentioned, we've been questioned for. Specific actions that the town is taking to improve resiliency and this would, would be a, a step in the right direction. And it's. Been on the C I P for a number of years.
Okay, thanks. Thanks, Kevin. Yeah, I know. You've been talking about that for a while. It, it sounds like we, we need to get that done. Alright, that plays floods. We're out of luck. So any other questions, folks? It's just for a town meeting. We're good? Can I take a motion?
Move to call a town meeting at six forty-five P M on January seventh, twenty twenty-five for the purpose. Of approving a fiscal year twenty twenty-five non-budgeted appropriation of. Two hundred and sixty-four thousand, two hundred and twelve dollars and forty-six cents of FEMA storm reimbursement funds. For the development of an alternative fuel site. Timberland Golf Course and to fund costs the town of Berlin incurred extinguishing the fire on Lamentation Mountain.
Thank you, second. Any other comments or questions? Hearing none. All is in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Alright, so moved.
Thank you.
Thanks, Kevin.
Next item, don't go anywhere, Kevin. Hundred fifty thousand from the police extra duty fund to the capital non-recurring fund for the purchase of police vehicles.
So, um, you, you may or may not recall in the fiscal year twenty-four budget, we made a, a change. To remove the police extra duty revenue. So that which is paid by. Private enterprises who hire our police officers and, and the vehicles. Uh, to help control traffic or crowds or other things that might occur. We moved that out of the general fund and into its own separate fund with the intention of taking the money that we charge for the vehicles. And any overage, um, to utilize to offset purchasing police vehicles. At the end of fiscal year twenty-four, uh, we obviously had a, a decent accounts receivable balance. Obviously the work that's done later in the year, we don't necessarily collect. All of those bills. The audit is now completed, as I mentioned. We've collected a significant percentage of those receivables. And are now prepared to move a hundred fifty thousand dollars from that extra duty fund into capital non-recurring for police vehicles. Um, on the plan this year, the number is two hundred twenty thousand dollars for police vehicles. So for, for that perspective, this transfer would allow. Using those numbers, a hundred fifty thousand to be funded by private duty jobs and private enterprises that benefited from our police officers. And mitigate that impact on the taxpayers, lowering that number down to seventy thousand dollars. So. One year in, uh, it's, it's accomplished really what we intended to accomplish. So now we're asking to make that move so that Mr. Simons and the police department can decide what vehicles are needed for the police and move forward.
Okay, quest- questions?
Yeah, I just want a question here. The.
Yes, sir.
Uh, the police extra duty fund, just clarify this. I'm not trying to, uh, you know, open a can of worms here, but that's, that's completely different from. Uh, other overtime that's paid out of the budget, uh, to the police officers for their extra duty?
Correct. Yeah, the overtime that would be coming out of the general fund would be, um, for staffing needs. Uh, either, either for additional staffing or because somebody may have called out and somebody else has to be held over.
Uh, that's a completely. But that's a completely different fund, right, Kevin?
That is, that's, that would be paid out of the general.
Yeah, I just wanted to be sure I had that clarification. Okay, thank you. Yep.
We're good? Okay, good.
Transfer a hundred and fifty thousand dollars from the police extra duty fund for the police vehicles account. And the capital non-recurring funds for the purchase of new police vehicles pending approval by the Board of Finance.
Thank you, second.
Second, Deb.
Thank you, Donna. Uh, any other comments or questions? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Alright, so moved.
Thank you.
Thanks, Kevin.
Uh, topic six, uh, to award backup services for routine repairs, emergency repairs and minor construction. Of water and sanitary sewer system, contract number twenty twenty-five oh eight. Ray, I think you were going to speak to that.
Yes.
Here you are.
Look at that, raise here.
Right up. We went out to bid in September, uh, and we only got one bidder and that was the bidder was Earth Contractor. And, uh, so we went ahead with them and, uh, they had expressed some concern too, but they were looking to have backup. And, um, so we went out with another bid for backup, uh, providers and we're more successful. We have six bidders this time that came through. Um, and that's, that will use that list as, as backup for any, uh, ci- circumstances. Earth has expressed the fact that they've been doing a lot of extra work for a lot of the utilities, uh, excuse me, a lot of towns in the area. And as a result of that, figured that it would be nice to have somebody. And originally we did always have either two or three, uh, uh, individuals bidding. So it was kind of a. Freaky situation to have one bidder and then the next time we did have six bidders or seven bidders actually.
Okay. Questions? Okay, we'll go ahead and, uh. Hey, yeah, cause yes.
Counselor Panessa, you're excusing yourself that whole bit. I just want it on record.
Okay, I'm excusing myself from the whole item.
Thank you, sir.
Alright, so I'm going to move to authorize the interim town manager to accept the attached bid results for backup services for routine.
Thank you. Repairs, emergency repairs and minor construction of the water and sanitary sewer systems. Uh, contract number two oh two five dash oh eight and utilize the specialized services of any of the six contractors. When using fig, uh, future purchase orders depending on vendor availability and cost effectiveness through December thirty-first of twenty twenty-six.
Thank you, second.
Second.
Thank you. Uh, hearing no other comments or questions. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So moved.
Thank you.
It always gets a little nervous when I start ringing into the building.
Oh, we even have our own.
We have it already.
Should we ask what they are?
We're ahead of the game.
Oh, yeah.
But I want to express something because I wanted to thank.
Looks like some nice brown heroin in here.
How would you know?
I don't know. Saw a few people with it, uh, back in the day.
This is what we inherited when we inherited East Berlin.
Oh, lovely, lovely.
Berlin and as a result of that, when we were created back in nineteen sixty-six, uh, this pipe became our pipe. Uh, we've had three breaks.
Ah, boy.
One and one over there. This one unfortunately lost.
You guys ever hear of like peppermint bark or something?
Yeah, you want something, there you go.
Oh, God.
Jeff, you want to take one?
Take one home.
Like peppermint bark?
Oh, yeah, there you go. Looks like that too, yeah.
Point I want to make is, uh, this does not, uh, this does not get clear unless it's, unless it's purposely. Round out and clear. And then usually they put it to some other, this is cast iron pipe.
Okay.
Typical of what happens in a cast iron pipe. Uh, so the diameter here is originally eight inches, probably about four inches. We actually have at Wilcox app, we have another one at, at the office that only got about a two inch opening.
Oh.
So it gets pretty well clogged up. This is probably about seventy years of, of iron accumulation. I have to appreciate the fact that we get water.
Right.
The Britons always had a filtration plant. Their iron, uh, their iron concentrations in their water is very low. So is ours, our, our well, well field. So this is accumulation, even though you've got a low iron. So what you have is iron magnetic bacteria building up on each other, surviving on the iron that's in there. And that's what that accumulation is. And as it dries out, that, that this way it is, when it's wet, it's all gelatinous, but you cannot flush it out. It has to be reamed out. About thirty miles of this is in the Kensington system and about fourteen miles is in the Reading system. We only lie a couple of miles in the, uh, East Berlin. This is typically.
Something I look forward to down the road.
This is typically our pipe. It's, uh, it's ductile iron. As you can see, it's pretty smooth inside. This would have us, the friction factor of a hundred and ten or a hundred and twenty. Brand new pipe is a hundred and forty. This is from nineteen sixty-seven.
Really?
They're only a few years apart.
Wow.
That's the point I wanted to make and I wanted to make it very clear that this is probably dealing with, yeah, and, and on a routine basis.
Just don't hurt your back hearing.
Yeah.
I was hoping to give you that one.
It's a giving season.
Yes. Thank you, Ray. That could be a, uh, a little. There we go. Yes, something to remember us by, Lee. What the heck, right?
Very much.
Yeah.
But thank you for offering.
Like, my, like a nice paperweight on Lee's desk perhaps. I don't know. Doorstop, there you go.
Moving right along, right?
Yes.
Alright, the next, number seven, utilize the state of Connecticut D A S contract number twenty-four P S X zero zero seven one. Purchase precast concrete materials, Mike.
Yeah, um, this is the contract we typically use to, uh, purchase catch basin tops, some strippers, pipe. Um, and it's a nice contract because it's about a three-year contract with the state possibly extending it to two thousand and thirty. So it's a state D A S contract, gives us the opportunity. It's all unit price based and we're buying it at the same prices that the state D O T does. Like to use it for our highway department and anyone, any other department, highway, public grounds, facilities, board of that.
Okay. Sounds good, folks. Questions? No questions? Motion?
Move to utilize the state of Connecticut Department of Administrative Services contract number. Two four P S X zero zero seven one. To purchase precast concrete catch basin materials, concrete pipe and related items using. Uncommitted funds from available accounts over the life of this contract.
Second. Thank you. Uh, hearing no other comments or questions. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So moved.
Number eight is to utilize state of Connecticut D A S contract number twenty-four P S X zero one zero four. For guide rail repair and installation.
Um, similar quest. This is the, uh, state contract for guide rail repairs and installation. Um, we've used a couple of different contractors over the years or do an excellent job and we basically buy these unit prices at the same, at the same, um, cost as a state D O T.
Thank you. Uh, questions, folks? Hearing none, we'll take a motion.
Move to utilize the state department of. Move to utilize the State Department of Administrative Services unit price contract number twenty four P S X zero one zero four to purchase guide rail repair and installation services through October thirty first, twenty twenty seven. Or to a later date if further extended by the state with the most response cost effective and qualified contractor.
Thank you, second.
Second thought.
Thanks. Any other comments or questions? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Posed, so moved. Thanks.
Number nine is to waive the bidding requirement.
Jeez, Mike, we can't get rid of it.
For this street light services contract number twenty twenty two dash twelve extension.
Right, um, Pascilla Electric was selected out of, I think we had like six or seven bidders back in two thousand twenty two. They had the lowest rates for labor and equipment. And we, I don't know if some of you may not recall us, but we had a very go around sort of approach with streetlight maintenance contractors. We finally found a company. They're actually, they worked for Eversource as well. We're just wrapping up a three year contract with them the end of this year. I talked to them. They're willing to go for another three years with a zero percent increase for next year, five percent for two thousand twenty six and five percent for two thousand twenty seven, which works out to be three point three three percent per year. And they've done everything we've asked, so.
Nice.
Let's get there.
That's great.
Three years after that, we'll go.
Don't we want to make a comment about the lights on our way here?
Who's got complaints? What street?
Coming up here.
Not actually, those aren't streetlights.
What are those?
Those are facility, those are internal to the.
I thought I was tripping by the time I got there. Not that I would know what that's like.
She told me on the way out, she said it's like a strobe thing.
We know.
Well, he didn't say, what's going on?
Product of the seventies.
Are they, are they still blinking right now? Because I didn't.
They were.
When we came in, they were.
Blinking, absolutely.
They were. That's too funny.
Ready for a motion?
Yeah, we're ready for a motion.
Yeah.
Okay, move to waive the bidding procedures and authorize the interim town manager to extend contract number twenty twenty two dash twelve, Pascilla Electric Corporation of Madison, Connecticut provides streetlight maintenance services through December thirty first, twenty twenty seven with no any increase in the account of year twenty twenty five and a five percent increase in labor equipment rates accounted years twenty twenty six and twenty twenty seven, respectively. This is in the best interest of the town.
Thank you, second.
I'll second that.
Any other questions, comments? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Posed, so moved.
Thank you.
Thanks, thanks, Mike.
All right. Number ten, discussion about the restoration and planning related to the Hawthorne Fire Lamentation Mountain. I believe Jim is online to talk about that. Maureen is also available.
Good evening. So obviously, we, you know, everybody's been watching what's happening with the fire. I was in contact with Donna and Bobby in her office from early days talking about the idea of what fun, you know, asking about what funding might be available for restoration activities, other, you know, repairs, things that 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 might need or need or want to be done up on the mountain. And then we've been kind of just gathering information and we've gotten to a point where I want to share some of that with you and and also get your guidance on next steps going forward. So well, we finally, it took us a while, but we got some area of the fire. We find that the largest area of the fire was in Meriden, actually, and with a smaller amount in Berlin and very little, if any, in Middletown, although many of the fire, the roads that were constructed to access the firefighting were constructed in Middletown. So there's, there's activities of of all three towns. And as you know, we already have the the collaboration with Middletown and Pistol Creek and Lamentation Mountain area, and we've had conversations with Meriden. So, you know, there's been active collaboration in the past. So again, we find that, you know, like most of the land's in Meriden. Second thing is, we learned that some of the, that the state is providing assistance to the property owners to evaluate the damage to their properties. We provided in the agenda item tonight, the report that was done for the Berlin Land Trust for a property it has on Lamentation Mountain. I believe that's the only report that the state has done so far. And we found that, you know, if we requested this for the town parcels, and there were three parcels involving forty eight acres that were affected by the fire that are owned by the town, that those would be provided by free, for free by by deep. So we did submit the paperwork to get that evaluation done. And Woody's working on that. There's a meeting set up for early twenty twenty five, other staff members and perhaps from planning and other staff members that might be involved will also go on the site walk with deep. But when we did, when we did finally reach, reach the folks at the deep forestry unit, they were very helpful. They did these, again, the report for the land trust. They were helpful, providing the mapping and and kind of giving us some guidance. So I think that, you know, and just to say that, again, we're, we're talking about generally exploring funding. Obviously, there's a lot of stakeholders, the towns, the private property owners, Connecticut Forest and Park Association that manages the trails that run through the property. Of course, the Berlin Land Trust is both, you know, property owner and has trails on its property and such. And I I had conversations with with various people and including, you know, our, our fire departments and Simons and others and you know, their interest in kind of maintaining access for firefighting there in the future. Other ideas for, you know, whether it's trail improvements, memorial to the firefighter, et cetera. But, you know, this is all preliminary, but the
Bring you up to date dialogues with the state first, first and foremost, Meriden, I think, to figure out where they're headed.
Did he, he ended it? Oh, okay. He ended it, yeah. He's good. He's good.
Request for permission to continue discussing, like having discussions about how to restore things. That's the only request.
What it seems like. Yeah, right? Yeah.
Just, you know.
No, no, it's no, hopefully.
Right?
Um, yeah, so, yeah, of course. It's a lot of work to do up there now. So, okay, yeah, of course, let's keep discussing it. And some good stuff here listed too, what we could do, right?
I think there's some opportunities and perhaps some funding. We expect another round, et cetera. So yeah, we'll, we'll keep working on it and we'll report back when we have more to say.
It's tough to discourage that, yeah.
Piano.
It's shot stick, yeah, yeah. Barbed wire across the path. Yeah, yeah.
Thanks, Jeff.
Thanks.
Good night.
Good night.
All right, good night. Thank you.
Take care.
And, okay.
Close that?
Yes, yeah, we're good.
Number eleven, and since you did so well on that other item, Kate is going to speak on the land recording contract.
So I'm asking for a four year contract, which is why I was in front of you. Is to switch vendors though. Currently, I am with COT Systems. I've been with COT. I think COT has always been part of Berlin. I had them in Wallingford. And when I was deputy in Manchester, we tried to go in house. It was, it was a disaster. And they wound up going with COT. Unfortunately, in on Christmas of January twenty twenty three, COT got hacked big time because we were with the cloud with them. We were down for well over a month. Now, the only thing I will say is that the saving grace was that we had the paper. There are towns that are trying to move away from paper. It is against the law. The law says that you have to have your index done in a timely manner. You merge your indexes. You have to produce books. So that's where it is. Fortunately, I had in November of twenty twenty three, we had some staffing issues that worked out and we were able to get up to speed and the whole thing. So we had books. That was then sold, a company in Canada. And they they're responsive but not responsive. I mentioned at the conference in September that I would want, I was going up to bid. And I talked to the three vendors. We did do an RFP. I only got an RFP from one company. COT did not respond. The company that I would like to go with also did not respond. So the company that responded is a very small and record company, and they do okay with small towns. Berlin is a small town, but we're not a small town. We're over twenty thousand now. You can see the development that's going on. I'm hoping that once land records get back to normal, the activity will continue to be normal. I asked COT why they did not submit an RFP. They said they didn't know anything about it. And I said, well, my contract is up in December of twenty twenty four. And they said, oh, well, we just figured you would continue with us. We weren't going to talk to you. They're in between salespeople. And I just found out yesterday, we, I now have a new salesperson. But then I asked IQS why they didn't submit an RFP. And their response to me was that they would not be able to come on board in January of twenty twenty five. Yeah, twenty five. It was too quick of a turnaround time and they are trying to line up people. So, you know, get the company, get the contracts together and everything. So I discussed this with the town manager. And I did extend the contract with COT for one year. So I'm safe for, as long as nothing happens again with IT until the balance of twenty twenty five. I would like you to approve this contract tonight so I can get lined up, bring IQS in in January of twenty twenty six. All right, I know it extends it out a bit, but I need to make sure this is the most aside of absentee balloting and elections, land records are the most important part of my job. And we bring in, we're a revenue collector. I gave you the numbers that we took in for
Yeah.
As far as we collected during last year about three hundred and fifty thousand. Now, this is only land records. It doesn't include the rest of my contract or my revenue. But back in twenty one, twenty two, we collected over five, you know, five hundred thousand. So it is totally dependable upon the land record, record activity, the conveyances that I collect, things along those lines. But I do understand, and I want to be very clear, this is a cost increase. But I really think it will benefit the town in the long run. And I want, I need a dependable vendor. And I'm just not comfortable with what COT has been doing. Now, the other thing, and I hesitate to bring this up because we are being taped and everything, but I have not seen this in my office, but there are two towns near us that have had problems where their indexes are not showing up with all the activity at home, but it shows up in the office. And I don't have that as far as I know, and I don't know why it's going on with them. And that's their problem because I haven't had that issue yet. But I'm very concerned with a lot of this stuff. The other thing is, is that we have, and I'm, I'm, I'm proud of this. We do do the fraud protection. That will continue with whoever we go with. But that was another reason not to go with a smaller company is their fraud protection is very expensive. But right now, you can sign up through my website webpage. And you can say if there's any activity under this last name, then you are notified. And we do have people who have signed up. Now, the only thing we caution people is it's always by last name. So if you have twenty families of Smiths in the, in the town, then Smiths will, or, you know, they're going to get hit with it. But it will be every time that there is something on the land records that's reported, they will get notified of that. And we did put that in, I think about maybe the beginning of the year, middle of the year. So we are trying really hard to make sure we do the right thing for residents and or people who own property in town. But I I do think that we need to change vendors. And I I say that with a heavy heart because I've been very pleased with COT for a long time. But it's up to you and, you know, I I can only ask, but there is an additional expense here.
What's the increase of the, from what we're paying now to what it would be with the new vendor?
So the monthly fee currently is on your, your.
Okay. It's not that much.
Currently with COT, it is, and this is for the new year going in for twenty twenty five is eleven fifty five.
Okay, I I see it now. I missed that, Kate. I'm sorry.
I just want to make sure that you see that.
It's not that much of an increase.
No, not.
Not at all.
And then, but the audit does increase a bit more. That goes from the sixty cents per document to the dollar forty. And that is because they do it with an outside vendor. Hey, Kate. But the, I, the historic documents, once we get those moved over into their system, there won't be the hundred and eighty. I'm sorry.
Just a quick question.
Yes.
There's, there's a comment in here that it's no longer going to be stored in the cloud. It's going to be hosted by the town.
Yes.
Does that mean now we have to get a separate server for this and?
I did check on, thank you for bringing that up. So I did check with IT, we would be okay. But right now, I think we need to bring this back into the town. What happened with the and I mean, any company can be hacked.
Right, but you feel more comfortable with.
Right now, because this really was bad, you know, this was, and it was not, of course, just Berlin, it was host, any customers of Connecticut, any customers in Connecticut and especially Ohio, and they're in Vermont too, I think, and a couple of other towns or states. But it was the towns that were hosted in the cloud that really got impacted. So if this had happened and we were, if I understand it correctly, and I didn't go through it, so because I had a different experience, the ones who were had their own server or had the town hosted the server, they, the residents could still see on the outs, you know, on the webpage. We were shut down totally. You couldn't see it in the, on the website. You couldn't, you know, you had to do it. I had title searchers coming in and attorneys, and they're saying to me, what do you mean I have to use the books? And they couldn't use computers. And they're like, that's not how I learned. I said, but this is how you should have learned. You know, so it, but like I said, we were and I, I love to say that it's because I'm a pre-town clerk, but it just happened. We had just updated everything. And that's what was saving, you know, me from really being yelled at by a lot of people. But people had to come into the office. And the whole computer system was down. As we're taking in documents.
Could you even take in documents?
We did. I mean.
You helped them, right?
Oh, yeah, Jeff, thank God, because I was like, so we took them in, we numbered them, we did all this, but. Oh, yeah. Jeff, thank God, because I was like, so we took them in, we numbered them, we did all this, but so you have to think about this. It's even, I think it was like well over a month. All of a sudden we were able to start getting in a little bit and they were starting to get stuff up. And then they would shut us down because they were still, you know, working on it. And then we would get a little bit more in. And then we had to balance everything, but it was like six weeks of work that all of a sudden we had to get through the computer systems. Now, the nice thing was it was in January, you know, for us it was the beginning of the year. And that whole bit, I mean, but if this had been during the presidential election, I, I would have quit. I wouldn't do it. I can't do it. I know. But it's just, no, I wouldn't have, but you know, but it just, it really has to be. And IQS has, they do have a lot of customers.
They have thirty thousand, right?
I think so, yeah. And people like them. You know, I've asked. Yeah, that's what I, I hear. Um, they're, and I've talked to the town clerks that have them and a lot of the add-ons are part of the whole package. So it's not where you're getting kind of nickled and dimed on things and that whole bit.
Rocky Hill uses IQS. I know we're always curious to know what Rocky Hill uses. They use IQS.
Okay. Yeah.
All right. Thank you.
Sounds good, Kate. We know your recommendations are always good.
Well, it, it, it's careful thought. I mean, I really, if not, I, I think you know that my budget is tight. I don't, but I, I, I think we need to try this.
Let's do it.
Okay, thank you.
Move to approve waiving the town's bidding procedures and award a four-year contract starting in January of twenty-twenty-six with IQS in the amount of nineteen thousand eight hundred dollars plus auditing fees of about four thousand dollars. Dollar forty per document. There will be overtime char, a one-time charge of six thousand dollars to convert the historical records, the new software paid for by the town clerk's preservation fund.
Take a second on that. Thank you. Any other comments or questions? Harry Nunnell is in favor?
Aye.
Posed, so moved.
Thank you.
Thank you, Kate. Oh, Kate.
Oh, this is the, the committee that has a lot of, you know, I'm, I'm sorry, the division between this committee is unbelievable.
Lot of personality conflicts. I understand. Yes.
Very scary meeting. Uh, so did everybody have a chance to take a look at it, see if there are any conflicts or everybody okay with how it fell around the holidays?
Yeah, I think it's, yeah, you got no conflicts.
Thanks, Steve.
Right? I guess it looks pretty.
January Ryan might have a change of.
Yeah.
That's beyond my control.
Yeah. Yeah, I think we're beyond, uh, that already, Charlie. I'm sorry. But, um, yeah, no, I think it's good. So, uh, if everyone's good with it, we can, uh, take a motion.
We'll do approve the option of the town council meeting calendar for twenty-twenty-five in January of twenty-twenty-six.
Thank you. Uh, any other comments or questions? Harry Nunnell is in favor?
Aye.
Posed, all right, so moved. All right.
I guess I'm up next.
You're up next.
All right. So I have a V and A.
Oh, God, no. Let's not go there again.
I don't have to do that. So the only thing I have is I just want to express my appreciation to all having the opportunity to work with you. It's my last meeting, as you know. Gentlemen back here, Ryan, and, uh, wish him the very, very best. A wonderful town and with good people in it. And I want to thank you for, uh, me having an opportunity to work with you the last six months. I appreciate it.
A pleasure working with you, Lee. Pleasure being.
Lee, you did a great job and appreciate you stepping in, in the interim period and be great. Happy to have you.
Thank you very much.
Happy to have Ryan coming in in January. Okay, special committee reports. I don't think we have any, right? Uh, no, council communications. What do we have?
Just a couple of things.
Yes. Do we have stuff?
Absolutely, absolutely. Um, I know, uh, are we still on track to hear from the mayor and why? I believe it's in either January or February on their proposal for the senior, on a senior center and?
Yes, they are working on it. Yes, they're working on their plans. I gave them all of the, uh, public documents from, you know, some of the, the studies we had done. Everything public has gone to them as far as I know. And, uh, yeah, they're working on it.
And we have a date on when they're gonna be?
No, not yet. Whenever they're done with whatever due diligence they're.
Okay, and, uh, where are we, where are we gonna, how are we moving forward with the study on the East Berlin Pool? What are we gonna do? We have anything we're gonna talk about coming up, uh,
Yeah.
beginning of the year?
Yeah, we probably, we probably need to talk about it. Yeah, we can, we can put it on the agenda, January, maybe.
Okay, and last but not least, uh, I know we've all had a prob with tablets here.
Yes, are they fixed now?
Well, I don't know if anybody else went down, but I went down and I went and got the update. Okay, they did get, they did provide the update to the tablet. It does allow you to at least open. You can open the documents. It, you know, what is gonna happen? If you have an email or something else there, that email is gonna go, you know, it'll be in the background, but you could see the document if it's an Excel spreadsheet, uh, a PowerPoint presentation or, you know, maybe a, a Word document. But then you gotta click out of that and go back, you know, to where you were at. So the functionality, at least you could open the document, but the functionality of the tablet is, you know, not to where it should be. And when I talked to Brian, it's Brian, right? Yeah, Brian. Cause he was there when, uh, Dave was doing the update, you know, and he basically said, if you guys wanna go to laptops, you gotta put in a budget for next year. So I mean, with what we do and what we need to look at, uh, you know, I, my recommendation would be is that we put this in the budget to get the town council laptops, cause it's, at least you'll have the functionality. It'll be a lot easier to work with. You can't use a mouse on, on the tablets. You gotta scroll with your finger. And if you go to the wrong place, you lose everything. Then you gotta go back through the process. You gotta click back out of it again. But it, the good thing about it is, is that you can open a doc, you know, a document if it's attached. Before you couldn't do it, but you had, no, but but you have to go, you couldn't do it until you had the, uh, the, uh, new upgrade to it. But I wanted to see how it would work. You can open a document, like I said, but you don't have the main functionality that we should have uh, on a laptop and to get a laptop for everybody. I mean, the cost is, these things probably cost more than what the laptop would cost. And I think they were concerned about the licensing because of there was something there with the screens bigger than ten inches. You had to go for a different licensing or something like that. I think, Lee, we talked about that. I mean, the cost is minimal compared to whatever, but, uh, you know, in order, you know, it's not like we're making millions of dollars here, cause we're not. Uh, it's, you know, we, I, I just feel that we should have the ability and have the tools. We have the tools and have the functionality to do our jobs. Period. Cause I mean, there's a lot you gotta look at. And if you wanna compare apples to apples, you can't even sh, uh, shrink the screen size down. You have to go from back and forth screen to screen to screen. So.
So you've tried the instruments?
I have. You know, I was trying to be open-minded and, you know, but, you know, as you and I discussed too, Lee, is that, you know, the functionality is just not there with these tablets. So, Ryan?
Yeah, we could work, we'll work on that.
I, I'm trying to take, you know, I was trying to be proactive, take the steps forward and, cause I know everybody's sitting up here, you know, with the council, including the mayor. You know, sad problems.
Mayor, if you're okay with that, we can talk to finance about making sure it gets into the budget.
Yeah, yeah, of course. Yeah.
I've, I've been down five separate times and it was the sixth time when I come down and got the update. And one of the times they had to wipe the tablet out completely and reconfigure it.
Yeah.
So, and then one, I'll just make one last point. If you wanna use the stylus and take notes and everything, see like, like a lot of these documents here, they go like to the cloud, but the, uh, everything there is stored on, on, on the tablet itself. So it's gonna eat up all this, all the, uh, storage that you have if you try to use a stylus and take notes. That's my recommendation.
All right, good. So. Uh, any other, uh, council communications?
Just one thing.
Yes, yes, of course.
Um, I just wanted to put out, um, went to the Berlin Lions, had their holiday tree walk at the Berlin Bear Grounds. Um, although probably three out of the four nights were very cold.
Yeah, of course.
It was well attended. It was nicely done. Uh, so I wanted to thank them for doing that. The charity seemed to, to make out pretty well as each, each night there was a different charity, which was great. And then I also wanted to thank, and I'm, I'm blanking on which fire department when they did the tree lighting, um, and had that, uh, as well. I thought it was a very nice community event. So I just wanted to put kudos out there for those.
Yeah, absolutely. Yeah, that's good. Excellent. Yes, sir.
Thinking of firefight, we talked about doing something to thank the firemen next month.
Yes.
We proceed with that.
Probably need to talk to maybe Jimmy Simons and maybe the chiefs and just see what we can do. Yeah, we, 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 and I have talked about that a couple of times. So we, we figured we'd get through the holidays and then we'll could sit down and figure out what, what to, you know.
I noticed in the restoration plan, they talked about a monument for the fireman.
Yeah, I saw that.
That's a great idea.
That's a good idea. At the, at the location maybe or somewhere public. I don't know. Maybe it's not the best spot, but we'll figure out. Yeah, well, wherever the appropriate place is. But yeah, we, we can definitely talk about that. And, uh, yeah, there's a bunch of things we do need to talk about, about the fire department with the fire and the firemen and the time lost. And there's some things we maybe could do for them. We, we just have to figure out what that is and how we do it with certain things. I mean, the dinner, that's easy, you know, right, to get there and honor them, but and honor the, you know, the Weathersfield firefighter that lost his life as well. But other things we could do for our firefighters. So we'll, we'll work on that at, at the beginning of the year.
There's just one thing. I'm not sure, some of you may know, uh, Tom Higgins had passed this past week. He was a big, uh, very involved with DAV, uh, disabled American vets in this community and Britain as well, and his three daughters reside in this community. And, uh, he passed this past week and I'd just like to mention, wonderful man, wonderful man, really giving to the community.
Don, I just wanna piggyback on that. I knew Tom very well. He was an elk at the New Britain Elks there. Uh, he did a lot for Reach Across America.
Absolutely.
As you mentioned, the DAV, and he was, uh, very heavily involved with all the veterans on a state level. And, uh, it's, it's unfortunate, a few years ago, he came down with cancer. And, you know, now he's, he was battling it and battling it and passed. I, I think I spoke to him probably about a month ago, month and a half ago when he was at an elk meeting. But a very respected gentleman and he did so much for the veterans, uh, in the town and also at the state level.
Yeah, he's a wonderful person.
Absolutely.
Hey, anyone else? No. Okay, so, uh, acceptance of minutes, we're at. Couple motions.
Move to November twentieth, special meeting minutes.
All right, uh, yes, that was our presentation, um. Okay, second?
I'm abstaining as well.
Okay, uh, second on that?
I can second that.
At that one and, uh,
Well, I made the motion. Can I make it even?
Can he make the motion? I was abstaining?
Can't.
Okay.
Can't.
Okay, I'll make the motion, okay, to accept the minutes and the special meeting.
Sandy.
I'll second.
Thank you. Uh, all in the favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Posed, so moved and.
Move to accept the November twenty-sixth meeting minutes as presented.
You second on that?
I can second that.
Right. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Posed, so moved. And we need a, so we need a motion to go into exec, oh, oh, that's off. Oh, okay. Well, uh, Merry Christmas present and.
You miss a few minutes of O'Kylin.
All right, so motion to.
Yeah, right.
Yes.
Don't move second.
Second. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
All right.
Happy holidays, Merry Christmas, everybody.
Happy holidays.
They say in my hometown, please not be dirty.
Yeah.
Hey, Merry Christmas.
Christmas, everyone.
I mean, speaking to your microphone.
Thanks a lot.